Good morning.
Good morning.
Although it's not quite 9:30, I think everyone's here that's going to be here today, so I'd like to welcome everyone to the Buncombe County Planning Board meeting that is scheduled for January 9th, 2012. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and I would... Actually, our agenda, I don't know whether any of you folks have had a... There's a copy of it there if you'd like to see it. Call for the swearing in of new members today, which we're not prepared to do. So anyway, I'll go to item number three, which is the approval of the agenda. I guess it's modified by omitting the item number two, which is identified as swearing in of new members.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to prove as amended. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes of the meeting that was conducted on December 19th, 2011?
I think that's the first time I've seen it on one page in a long time.
Well, I've been here a little over three years, and that's the first time I've seen it on one page, for sure.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second. Motion by Mr. Hughes. The second by Mr. Hudson. Yeah. Any discussion? Any modifications there, too? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries. The next item of business on our agenda is a public hearing zoning map amendment request. It is from a lady by the name of Kashka, if I mispronounce this, please let me know. Kashka DeBrul-Cawthorn. She has applied to rezone tax lot, pin number's 966-39-1698, which is also known as 266 B Ridge Road, and pin number's 9667-30-3011, also known as 218 B Ridge Road, which are currently zoned residential R District 2 to residential District R 3. I'll call on staff first, if you would, to please make a presentation for us.
Yes, sir. The applicant has requested zoning of two parcels. Together, they total 4.45 acres. Both of the parcels have frontage on B Ridge Road and are located near the intersection of B Ridge and Barger Roads. The property ending in number 1698 contains a five-space mobile home park, and it is 2.01 acres. The other parcel is 2.44 acres and is vacant. Although the majority of the property surrounding the subject is zoned R 2, the area is a mix of uses, including double-wide mobile homes, single-wide mobile homes, and single-family
reason for your request. I'm sure it's included in this package, but if you don't mind, briefly.
homes on large tracts.
Okay. The reason I'm requesting it is my sister is wanting to put a double-wide or on-frame
On the opposite side of B Ridge Road, adjacent to the subject property, is R 3 zoning.
modular home on the 2.44 acre piece of property.
Given the mix of uses in the area and the adjacent R 3 district, the requested zoning
Ma'am, could you check the switch on your microphone?
Maybe. Okay.
would be consistent with surrounding uses, and the land use plan update, which indicates
Can you hear me? You can hear me now? Okay, do you want me to start over?
Yes, if you don't mind.
My sister Amber is wanting to put a home, either a double-wide or an on-frame modular,
that R 3 is suitable for higher-density uses and mobile homes, and the planning department is recommending approval of this request.
on the 2.44 acre piece of property, and possibly an area for a single-wide for her current
We have gotten several calls on this since we sent out notices, and it's been a mix
roommate.
of both for and against the rezoning.
That's not determined right now. She might want to be just keep the whole property for herself.
Okay, thank you very much.
The lower piece of property is a mobile home park, and right now it's not zoned as a
Mr. Brul-Cawthorn, would you like to come forward and present to us your case for approving
mobile home park. But if I need to like... We're not planning to add or do anything, because with the septic and well area that
this request? If you would, please come up to the microphone and have a seat.
we have, it has the maximum amount of trailers that it can have in it. Can I... But if I wanted to upgrade a trailer, or replace a trailer, or put in a newer trailer,
Yes, please, that'll be fine. Thank you.
to have it zoned so that I can do that, it would be beneficial to me. That's basically why I'm asking for the...
Okay. How long have you owned the property?
About 10 years.
Okay.
It's not exact, but...
All right. Before we go to the public hearing portion of this process, does anyone have any questions? Mr. Brul-Cawthorn?
The 2.44 acres, have you always owned it?
I bought the trailer park and the second... They both belong to the same person, and I bought the trailer park and bought the second piece of land within six to eight months after that.
And with your current plan, you would access the property through the common road that goes through the mobile home park?
No, we were planning to put in a road from the top, on the B Ridge top part of the 2.44, so she'd have her own separate driveway entrance.
Okay. Anything else for the applicant?
What kind of slope do you have coming off of B Ridge?
Like a 30-degree grade.
Yeah.
It varies.
It's not bad, I've seen it. Yeah.
I did run the, excuse me, I did run the slope calculations on that, and the vacant parcel is 20.9% natural slope, and the mobile home park is 14.6%.
Okay.
What is the water source?
It's a well.
You're all on wells?
Well and wells.
And septic is...
Septic tanks. I have two septic tanks at the mobile home park, and one well, shared well. And then she would be putting in her own well and her own septic tank on the top piece of property.
So there would be two wells, then?
Well, mine is existing at the mobile park.
Yours, and then on the other property, there'd be a second well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
One other question I've got is on the parcel that currently contains mobile homes, do you live there, or do you rent those homes?
No, I rent those homes.
Okay.
Actually, my mother lives next door, and my other sister lives next door. They're all in the same area.
Okay. Does anyone else have anything?
Is the repair field for the park on the vacant lot?
No, actually, when I had wrote that up, as we was talking about putting in my sister's roommate's single, which is not a definite or even thought of, but where my septic and wells are at the trailer park, I have used all the space there on the septics and wells. So I'd either have to put it across the creek for the lower part, which is a lot of construction, or for the upper ones, I'd have to go up or into my mother's field to do that. So to put in like septic or well, if we needed to, I was going to use a little bit of that bottom part for the existing, if to replace existing ones if we had to.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item in this process is we will open up the meeting for public comment. And for those of you that have not been here before, the rules are as follows. If you would, when you come to the microphone, please come forward and sit down at the microphone. Introduce yourself, give us your name and where you live, if you don't mind, and limit your comments to three minutes. And then we'll go to the next person, and I would ask everybody, respect everyone else's opinion, and let everybody have their three minutes uninterrupted by others. So given that that's open, who would like to go first? Jack, would you like to go first? If you don't mind, come up and state your full name and where you live, please. And again, please try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Okay. I'm Jack Sorrels. My wife and I, Louise, live at 274 Rose Hill Road. It's the corner of B Ridge and Rose Hill. We've been there 40 years, I guess. We live on two acres of land that's been in our family for over 100 years, and we've got the last two acres. My grandfather built the big white house down on Rose Hill Road, and it's 100 years old. Will be next year. We have doctors, lawyers, attorneys, all kinds of folks live in our area. We try to keep it clean. We have a neat little assembly up there, and we just feel like that we're, you know, we don't... I just don't believe that we need any more than what we've got already. We're happy where we're at, and I'd be glad to answer any questions if anybody's got questions for me.
Does anyone have any questions?
But you're opposed to the request.
Pardon?
Are you saying you're opposed to the request?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay. All right, I think that's it, Jack. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, appreciate your time. Next, who would like to come forward next to speak either for or against the application?
I've got some photos, so you all can see what the land is and how it's...
My name is Charlotte Kassab, and I live at 356 Rose Hill Road, and I'm here with my husband and my son, and we oppose the zoning change. I brought in photos to show you the difference between the houses in the area and this commercial trailer park that we have here. We oppose it because we don't want any more high-density trailers in the area. We believe that the DeBruls could put a single-family home up on their property, or even two single-family homes, and we're not against that, and that's their right. No one wants to stop them from having use of their land, but we just don't want any more trailers in the area. I think it really, really hurts our property values, and I have... We have all had problems with the tenants that live in these trailers. I know that that might not be relevant to, you know, their application for putting in a single-family home, because we could have problems with those tenants, too. But there's been a lot of noise and traffic that comes out of these high-density area, and if you look at the houses in the area outside of this trailer park, you'll see most of them have an acre or two acres of land, and this is the one area where you have, if you look towards the bottom, multiple houses and many cars coming in and out of it, and motorcycles. And nobody wants to deprive them the right of building, and we understand that they are legally... Well, it's an illegal use of an R 2, but that they have a right to keep it because it was grandfathered, but we would not want to see it turned into a legal R 3, because we would like to see that as the trailers get old, that they're removed, and it turns into a property use that's consistent with the neighborhood, not a continued trailer park. And that's our position.
Thank you very much. Who would like to come next? Yeah, well, come on up and, again, speak into the mic, if you would.
How you doing?
Go ahead.
As far as the trailer thing, there's trailers all over the neighborhood. The preacher that lives beside me, not on our property, he lives in a trailer. He's lived there the whole time. I was raised in there, we've been there, you know, since middle school, easy. The... That property down there where she's got the trailers, what some of y'all may not know is the old man that owned the farm next to us, when he passed, part of the request of selling that was to leave that, because that's where an elderly Lois Covan was raised or lives up there, and there's another elderly lady at the bottom there. Actually, all but maybe one renter or one trailer there, I think, has switched out in the past years, you know? I may be off on that, I'm Marine Corps, traveled a bunch and stuff, but the... When it boils down to it, in my opinion, and I know Abby's approved her house and everything would it boil down to, it's bear economics, and in the end, the only person truly affected is her pocket. She is a... She graduated cum laude from UNCC. I'm very proud of my kid's sister, you know? You know, any house, no matter what the materials, it'll look as nice as she can make it. I know her. I know, I've seen what she did with my granddaddy's place over there, you know? And I'm definitely for it, because she's worked really hard to get where she is.
Okay, thank you. Tracy. Next.
Jesse Messer, 12 Country Mountain Road, Asheville. Wife Charlotte is here with me. We've been in the area many, many years. It's a great area. We love it over there. But I'm not opposed to mobile homes in areas that allow mobile homes, that's named for mobile homes. I'm opposed to this change to allow more mobile homes in the area. I request that you deny this change. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else?
My name is Katrina DeBrul-Covan. Also, I live adjacent to mother's property, in the back of the property adjacent to where Amber's house would be, and we also have trailers on our property, on our driveway that we rent. But, and I do agree, I'm in favor of them doing this, because like Tracy said, it's what you make of it and how nice you keep it. It's not exactly that it's a double-wide or an off... Excuse me, an on-frame modular, it's how nice that you keep it. And since we have R 3 zoning already in the area, I don't see why there would be a reason why our particular piece, a section of land, wouldn't be able to be approved for the R 3 versus the R 2. And like Kashka says, we're not looking to extend the existing mobile home park. This is, we're looking to make it so that it can be upgraded, you know, if the possible... If a trailer moved out, you could put a newer, nicer trailer in there, instead of keeping the same older trailers that are in there. Or, and Amber having to be on a well and septic, there has to be that amount of land for it to be available, but I am in favor.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else like to come forward?
My name is Bill Rupp, and I live at 100 Dayspring Drive, Asheville. Our property does not join the property, which is under concern today. We are off of Barger Road. However, our coming and going is on B Ridge and on Rose Hill, and we enjoy the view that we see coming and going. We would not like to see that changed. I would like to go on record as opposing this recommendation.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I'm Mary Muleg, and I live at 242 B Ridge Road, which is right down from the current trailer park, and I am opposed to any addition of any more trailers in that area. It's rated R 2 now, and I think it needs to stay that way. I'm retired, and I don't want my property value to start to go down. We've had problems with these trailers. They're older. I know they say they want to go to R 3 and not increase it, but by one, or maybe a modular home, but we'll have no guarantee of that, and I don't want to see this become a trailer park area, and I don't want any more motorcycles roaring up and down our road. I want to keep it as it is.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
My name is Greg Pierce. I live at 11 Barger Road. We've been there for 17 years, my family and I. I don't have any objection to a single-family, whatever they want to put there. My problem with the... Is more with the regulation itself that says you can either have no mobile homes or as many as you want, and I don't want to see a mobile home trailer park from where it connects at the bottom of B Ridge all the way up to the top, which it could with the R 3 zoning. So I am opposed to the change for that reason.
Okay, thanks, sir. Please come forward.
My name is Steve Turner. I live at 356 Rose Hill Road with my wife Charlotte, and I oppose this amendment as well. I fear what it is, is it's kind of a nose in a... The nose of the camel, you know? We're all afraid that these trailers are going to lower property values, and what is? It is, and we all accept that, but, and I have absolutely no reason that the stories of sisters moving in and all that are untrue. That's what I'm saying, but the situation could change. The sister could move out, the property could be sold, and then we have a case of another trailer park. And so that's why I oppose this action.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Hello. My name is Andy Beert. I live at 77 Dayspring Drive, off of Barger, again, right off of Rose Hill. Access to Barger is located on both sides of her property, across the two that she was describing. The valley itself, if you look at the description of the property, it is a horseshoe turn in the road. On the uphill side is R 3. The horseshoe in itself has a lot of farmland, which is single-family homes, with the exception of the trailer park that she owns, and driving past, she does do a good job of keeping that in good shape. But I am opposed for several other reasons. One, we do not have public water, so our water table does have seasonal effect. My neighbors, who you met, the Robbs, I have tried their well watering my grass, so increasing the capacity in the lower field will affect the sustained water unless we have outside city water added, which it does not. When the new zoning came through, the planning board did a wonderful job at allocating that spot for that reason. They zoned our area even less because of that. We are a restricted wilderness with at least one acre per house because of water and septic and its perk. This is down from us, and will also have that effect. Secondly, where the property is located is putting a belt across the area that would make it R 3 and R 2 on each side, and it would be easier, as the gentleman before me had mentioned, to come in and argue to continue that, and that valley is a beautiful valley, as Mr. Sorrels had mentioned. He walks regularly around that loop, and it is safe. Creating that as a R 3 will encourage, or it'd be harder to argue, to keep it a R 2 single-family dwelling. The resources, I feel, are not available for that area. It'd be a bad decision. What Ms. DeBrul does have, I must commend her, she does do a good job with it, but I don't think it's appropriate land use for that particular spot. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else?
I want to sit down. I have letters from two of my neighbors who could not be present. They asked me to submit them.
Bring them to me, please. I'll be glad to read them as part of the record after you get through.
Okay.
Again, please identify yourself.
My name is Sharon Lewis. I live at 211 B Ridge Road, directly across from the property in question, and directly... Our driveway at 211 B Ridge Road is directly across from Covan Court, if you can see that on your map. I'll start with the bottom line. My partner of almost 19 years and I, who co-own our home at 211, oppose this application as our neighbors have. I can't say more eloquently than they have already said all the many reasons, but I'd like to add an additional reason. A couple of years ago, one of the trailers that was rented, I believe by Ms. DeBrul's sister, directly across from our driveway, was rented to a gentleman who drove for Allied Van Lines. Now, I want you all to picture, everyone in this room, picture a giant tractor-trailer, the tractor portion as tall as this ceiling, and half as big as this room, bright orange, parked directly across from your driveway, and picture it, or imagine it, sitting on idle with that big diesel engine idling for hours a day, not only polluting the air, but I worked from my home as a consultant, and I could feel the rumble of that giant diesel engine for hours a day as I tried to concentrate and work on my consulting business from home. We tried to call the county sheriff and complain about the noise, thinking there was a noise ordinance, because we had spoken to the gentleman who was the driver, and he brushed us off and said it should have been no concern to us, and it turns out, there was nothing we could do. The noise ordinance did not apply, and we had to put up with this giant orange machine parked on B Ridge Road, and here's where the other reason is that I want to bring to your attention. No one has mentioned this yet, or I guess it has been alluded to. We live right on the curve of B Ridge. Traffic speeds around that curve now. When my partner and I pull out onto B Ridge from our driveway, we have to be very, very careful to avoid, and we've had many near misses over the years, of people speeding around the curve, just as we're pulling out or into our driveway. So if we expand this property to include more, another driveway access as was described by the owner, right off B Ridge at the apex of that curve, it's going to add more traffic, more danger than already exists from traffic, and it's already scary enough. And I want to end by saying this. We have a diverse neighborhood of trailers and single-family residences, and we're proud of that diversity, but the difference is, some people take pride in the way they keep up their homes, whether it's a single-family residence or a trailer, and other people don't, and you can see the difference. And some of those differences are right there across from us, and we don't want our property values to suffer anymore. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
My name is Debbie DeBrul. I am Kashka's mother, and the other person there speaking, Amber, I'm her mother. My property does surround both pieces of property that you are actually looking at. I have listened to the neighbors. I have lived in this neighborhood for a long time, so I've known concerns that they would have had. I do want to address a few things. Yes, Kashka does keep the mobile home park up as good as she can. We try to keep good renters in there. We do not try to control their lives as to where they work, or what they do, or how they drive. We have to abide by all the Buncombe County ordinances when it comes to who you... What you... And here's where the other reason is that I want to bring to your attention. No one has mentioned this yet, or I guess it has been alluded to. We live right on the curve of B Ridge. Traffic speeds around that curve now. When my partner and I pull out onto B Ridge from our driveway, we have to be very, very careful to avoid, and we've had many near misses over the years, of people speeding around the curve just as we're pulling out or into our driveway. So if we expand this property to include more, another driveway access as was described by the owner, right off B Ridge at the apex of that curve, it's going to add more traffic, more danger than already exists from traffic. And it's already scary enough. And I want to end by saying this. We have a diverse neighborhood of trailers and single-family residences, and we're proud of that diversity. But the difference is, some people take pride in the way they keep up their homes, whether it's a single-family residence or a trailer, and other people don't. And you can see the difference. And some of those differences are right there across from us, and we don't want our property values to suffer anymore. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
My name is Debbie DeBruell. I am Koschka's mother. And the other person there speaking, Amber, I'm her mother. My property does surround both pieces of property that you are actually looking at. I have listened to the neighbors. I have lived in this neighborhood for a long time, so I've known concerns that they would have had. I do want to address a few things. Yes, Koschka does keep the mobile home park up as good as she can. We try to keep good renters in there. We do not try to control their lives as to where they work, or what they do, or how they drive. We have to abide by all the Buncombe County ordinances when it comes to who you-- what you can do and what you can't do. I want to address the fact that what we are mainly looking at is this piece of property that is vacant. We have already checked into having an additional driveway, additional well put in, the-- what we have to do to have the perk test, to have it ready for her a home, or an additional garage apartment, or whatever they were putting in. We have already had all of that approved. We've checked into all the records on what needs to be done to keep that up and to keep it proper. What we are looking at is the economic situation of what she would like to be able to build versus what economically she could build and live in. That is where a lot of this comes in, because under the R2, she would not be able to put an on-frame modular in. She would not be able to put a double-wide in. She has checked into what she would need to do as far as the well. She has checked in what she needs to do as far as a proper driveway, and where we could see coming in and out. And I just felt like that in order to give her a place that she could live over there with the rest of the family, which is what she would like to do, we just have to address the fact of allowing the R3 so that she can have a different type of structure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bruell. Anyone else? Come forward, please. Just wait. Yeah, speak into the mic. It'll get on the record that way. Thank you.
Yes, sir. My name is Charles Powell, and we, my wife and I, live at Jane Mountain Trail, which is just below where these, I'd say, maybe a few thousand yards below where these piece of property is located. We, my wife and I, own the field, which is more, which is close to the property they're talking about. We don't live at the field I'm talking about, but we own it. And we have spent a lot of time in the community. We've lived there for over forty-five years, and it is a nice community. As people have said, it's a mix of-- there are some mobile homes in the community, but the majority of the homes are residential. And we would like to see this remain as residential. We have worked very hard to have this area zoned. There was, a few years ago, as y'all can remember, there was a lot of controversy about zoning, and the community worked very hard so we could get zoning. And we just don't like to see people come in here and start to punch holes, so to say, in the zoning that we have set up. And we don't want to make that a precedence. And so I would like to go on the record as saying that I'm against the change in the zoning rules.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Is this your field right here?
Can I get a-- Yes, yes. He asked me if that was my field. And yes, that's the field I guess you all know where the Christmas tree--
Excuse me, sir. Please speak into the mic. Are you through? If you're through, yes, that's fine. Anyway, we wanted to get it on the record, is the reason I ask you. Speak into the mic.
I'm sorry. Yes, the-- The Christmas tree farm. Right. One of the commissioners, our chairman asked, vice-chairman, asked me if the property I was talking about is where the Christmas trees are planted. And the answer is yes. That's, my wife and I bought that particular piece of property, and we planted Christmas trees in that field.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward? Okay.
My name's Amber DeBruell. I am the sister that's looking to build on the property. I've lived there, at the area, since I was three. I went to those high schools. It's been my life. I have, sorry.
It's okay.
Really stressed out over this. I want to live near my mother. I want to live near my sister and my family. That is the property that is open for me to be able to do so. I have looked into all types of homes. I am getting married this year, and I want to have a family there. I understand there's concerns about a trailer park, and it's just not that case. So I just hope we can. I'm a student. I've been in school. I have two bachelors and a masters, and I'm going to be a counselor. The reality is, is I will not make a lot of money. So I like to economically keep it as low as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Carl Wheeler. I live on 26 Valley Creek Drive, formerly known as 279 B Ridge Road. If you look at the map, it's, where I live is 200, 300 feet directly south of this property. I've heard testimony here today about that there are other modular homes and trailers and so forth, and that's true. But there is not another mobile home park. The surrounding area of that horseshoe that is zoned R3, there is not another mobile home park. I think the neighborhood, and certainly I'm opposed to seeing any increase of mobile homes there. I don't think anybody in the neighborhood has anything against these people. They just don't want any more mobile homes. Neither do I. I don't want the traffic. I have to go around that horseshoe just like everybody else, in that sharp curve. I've nearly been taken out at my mailbox right there on B Ridge Road from that motorcyclist that lived in that trailer park. People walk up and down here. I mean, this is out in the country. We don't need any more traffic. I'm opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Good morning. I'm Danny Massey. I live at 200 B Ridge Road. I've been a resident there for ten years, built a log home there. These folks are good folks. I know them. I like to keep harmony in the neighborhood. What I would like to see, and there's builders here present, if there could be, you know, a foundation and a, you know, maybe a smaller home, that would probably cost close to what you could put a mobile home in for, that's what I would like to see. As a resident, we are concerned about property value, and there's seven, eight, $900,000 homes there, which is here or there. But I oppose a trailer park myself, but what I would like to see, you know, is maybe just a small residential homes built there. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else?
My name is Monroe Cope. I am representing my mother, which is Pauline Cope. And her piece of property is on the hill right above the trailer park. And she opposes the request for R3, and she opposes all trailer park activities.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Anyone else? I'm sure there's no one else that'd like to come up and speak. We got one more.
Good morning. Hello. I'm Charlie Lawrence. I live 223 B Ridge Road. I have recently returned back to my family mountain place. I've lived, my family's been on this for forty years, and I've had this where I live for the last about five years. And I live on two acres of land. I do have a double-wide trailer there, but I do plan to remove that and build a home, hopefully within a year. And so I do oppose this. The reason why is because when you go out on my front porch and look out at the mountains, there's the most beautiful mountains around Asheville. If you have not been out there, you need to go out there and see that, because it's the most beautiful area in this area, I think. And the valley there is right there in the center where the trailer park is located. So I oppose any additional trailers.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and read in for the record the one email and the one letter that was introduced to me just a little while ago. Bear with me just a second. The first one is from a gentleman by the name of Jeff Jelis, I believe. It's addressed to Buncombe County Government. Subject, of course, is this hearing we're having today. Says, "Dear sirs and madams, work prevented my attending the hearing today, so please accept this letter conveying my concerns about the proposed zoning change. As a Buncombe County resident for over ten years, B Ridge Road homeowner for six years, landowner for two years, and neighbor to the proposed zoning change, is my sincere wish that you will deny the proposal upon you this Monday, January 9, 2012, to amend tax, slot PIN numbers, et cetera, et cetera, from R2 to R3. There are R1 neighbors on either side of this land, and ours is predominantly a small quaint neighborhood of SFRs, single-family residences, I suspect. As a group, we are all working professional people who maintain and upkeep our properties, ensure the well-being of the neighborhood. The proposed changes would prevent an unsightly and potentially troublesome grouping of trailers into our neighborhood. Our chief concern is the devaluation of property values amid the surrounding R1 SFR properties. I urge you to deny the application for this change with respect, Jeff Jelis." The other one was submitted via email from Jean McClendon, and it says simply, it says, he's from 221 B Ridge Road nearby. "I oppose the change of the zoning from R2 to R3. We do not need trailer parks on B Ridge Road. B Ridge Road has all the traffic it can handle. My wife and I were hit while walking on the correct side of the road seven years ago," that is, less than 200 yards from this address, the residence. "We need to be building homes on this property to support a better tax base in the years to come, not another mobile home park." I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone else that would like to come up and speak regarding this issue? Okay.
I'm John Scroggs. My wife, Jan, and I live at 290 B Ridge Road. The back of our property borders up to Mrs. DeBruell, the mother of Koschka. The problem for all of us is not denying anybody a place to live, but just how beautiful it is there. About maybe six years ago, there was a six-acre tract of land that was behind us, bordering a lot of different neighbors. And instead of having that be sold to somebody and them developing densely in there, Mrs. DeBruell, we, Charlotte Kassab and her husband, and one other neighbor who has moved out of the area, bought that six-acre tract of land, built it, and split it up into one and a half acre tracts. That's one where one of the young ladies, the Bruell daughter, lives. Wonderful house back in there. I felt so much at the time that that property shouldn't be disturbed anymore. I put in the deed when it was deeded to me when we bought it, that nothing could be built there, no house, no dwelling. And, you know, there's plenty of ways that in years to come, and not now, that all this could be altered. If they could have septic tank pumped over into the pasture, and somebody says, just like the camel getting the nose in, and for living for fifty-nine years, I've seen that what your intentions are today, in five, or ten, or fifteen, or thirty years from now, it can change. And if something happened, I know they would not want to leave there, but if they sold it, somebody else could do something that's not their intention, even though their intention is to not do anything worse at this time. So we're against it.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else? No, you can't. You've had your moment in the sun. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, having appears that no one else would like to speak regarding this zoning amendment hearing, so therefore I will declare that the public comment period of this process is now closed. So having done so, do we have any comments from the board?
Yeah, I'd like to ask some questions.
Sure.
And you may have stated this before, but just how long have you owned the parcel that's got the trailer park on it?
Approximately about ten years, a little more than ten years.
About ten years. And do you know about how long that was in existence?
It's been there forty-plus years.
Forty-plus years. All right, that's it.
Anyone else? Joe, you got anything?
I drove through this area the other day, and I was struck by, even though I had looked at the aerial photograph, I was struck, as been stated, by the beauty of the area. And while I didn't do a count of homes, anecdotally, it seemed to me that the vast majority of the homes are single-family stick-built homes. There's a smattering, and I've even cycled through the area, so you really get a slow look at the way things are. There is smattering, as the residents say, there is smattering of mobile homes, but even among them, with the exception of the trailer park, they're all on single lots. Even the area that's zoned R3 to the west and the northwest, as I drove along B Ridge Road, looking up to the ridge line, those are single-family homes as well, even though So I was a bit conflicted. I drove out on Rose Hill, up and down. I went in through the area from two different directions. And the thing that we always have to keep in mind when we receive these requests is that while you own the land now, your family may not, years to come, something may happen, and someone else could acquire the land. If we go through the charts, you can see what could be put in an R3. And just a few that I picked out here this morning, obviously you can have a mobile home park, we know that. There could be clubs and lodges conditionally. Now, this is a stretch, I admit, but conditionally, the charts tell us that we could have a hospital or nursing home, retirement homes, that kind of stuff in there. There could be kennels. There could be a landing strip. I doubt there'd be a landing strip there, but that just gives you the idea of what the land could be used for. What is very realistic is that conditionally, a radio tower or a TV tower could be there. But that's probably not going to happen, because it's not on top of a ridge line. And the last thing I noticed was that conditionally, there could be approval for travel trailers and travel trailer parks. So we always have to look at it from what it could happen down in the future. And so as I, and Lord knows, we need affordable housing. There's, we all know that. We all know that. The commissioners know that. And we get into property rights, and you have your property rights, and so do the other people in the area who've invested their money, probably most of their money, in their homes and their property. And so they have their property rights. And it's a tough call, but I would have a hard time, as much as your needs are legitimate, when we, when you look at the whole thing, I have a hard time going along with your request, and I'm sorry for that, but...
Mr. Chairman?
Joe, I appreciate it. I let Joe go first because I knew Joe would more eloquently echo how I feel about it, too. Yeah?
I do want to point out, though, that any of those uses that are allowed conditionally do have to go for a public hearing before the Board of Adjustment. Those are not uses that are allowed by right and would face the same scrutiny that the rezoning is facing.
Okay, thank you. What I was saying is I echo what Joe so eloquently put, really is the potential uses of the property as the zoning goes with the title holder of the land, as it may be sold down the road someday. That's a concern of mine, but Michelle, I believe you wanted to say something?
I just wanted to follow up with that on the conditional use. If I, and help me with this, the slope on that, that you calculated, if they came in with a, to ask for conditional use for an addition or expansion of the existing park, they would have to have their roads at that slope level upgraded to a major park level. Is that correct?
Well, the mobile home parks, a major starts at twenty spaces, which I'm sure on septic would, well, it couldn't happen because you have to have at least 10,000 square feet per home when it's on septic. But the roads would have to be built at least sixteen feet wide and no more than eighteen percent grade.
Yeah, but I mean, the way that I read it, even if it's not an actual major one, they would still have to, at that slope level, come up to major road standards for a new park, like an expansion. And they would have to increase their, you see what I'm saying? They would have to do a lot to the existing park to even go down that road for adding additional.
A minor mobile home park at that grade would have to have the major park standard. You're correct.
All right, I just wanted to make sure on that, especially because they don't have septic, or they're on septic and well, as well. And, you know, I just want to speak again to this problem that, you know, we don't have a conditional process for manufactured homes. And the option, once again, is to come forth and ask for an R3. So I think this case, for me, you know, it is a lot around there, but the limitations on this particular parcel, if they came and even wanted to put a field, a septic field for an expansion into that next area, into the parcel that's next to it, it's not R3 as well. So would they have to come back and have that rezoned as well to make a septic expansion into that for a larger mobile home park?
I would have to research that. I can't say right off.
I wouldn't think so.
Wouldn't think so?
Well, I'm thinking the septic field is unrelated to whether it's a mobile home park or a single-family dwelling. Is that, am I heading down the right track?
That's my gut feeling.
Yeah. Yeah, I understand. I understand.
So anyway, what I think is, on this parcel, it's close enough to R3 and the affordability, for me, it is, I feel confident that they're not going to be able to expand that part financially, even someone else who owns it or would take title of it later, in a significant way that would make sense. So I feel like they'll be restricted to what the plan is that they're putting forward today.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments before we entertain a motion?
I think headed, headed down that same direction with the, with the burden of getting water and sewer here, this, I don't think in any of our lifetimes is ever going to be somewhere that's going to support twenty mobile homes. I think you're talking about a handful, optimistically, under ideal conditions. I don't, I don't ever see it being, except a twenty-unit mobile home park, it's just not feasible.
This is the reason why zoning is problematic when you're not starting with a blank piece of paper. And this is what we fought with. I mean, I've been on this board for a long, long time, and unfortunately, this is, this is what we run into when you have existing uses and they already infringe on each other. And so we are frustrated, as frustrated as you are, because we can't give you, in a lot of cases, the common sense answer. We have, we have regulation that we have to deal with. Having said that, the original zoning that was done here was done for a reason. And it's the fact that the roads that are there provide a very intentional separation of uses. And that's why they were used that way when this, when the zoning maps were created, to allow for R2 to stay within one side of the road and for the other uses to go to their uses. And so that's why I have a problem in approving this, not because I want to keep anyone from being able to use their property the way they want to. I think you should be able to put a house on your place, and I, and I'm sorry for that. But the reality is, is that this is an infringement into that R2 area that was very intentionally drawn. The problem we have here is, is we're a technical board. We're supposed to take our own emotional attachments to a particular case away from it and look at it solely based on what the intent of the ordinance originally was. And if I do that, if I'm honest with myself, and if I take away the fact that I very much want this family to have this house, if I do that, then I have to say that that map was drawn for a purpose and that that R2 is intended to be used for R2, which does not allow for this use. So don't hear us as not being moved by your, you know, by your appeal and by your, by your need for that. What's broke here is the ordinance. And so, you know, I think what we need to do is fix the ordinance. But I don't fix the ordinance by voting against what the law actually says, so I, too, will have to vote against this, and I'm sorry for that.
Okay. Yeah, Bernie?
One of the reasons I asked about how long that trailer park's been there, you know, it's obvious that park's been there well, well before zoning. I'm looking at adjacent properties, I look at properties across the street and on this photograph here, and I see trailers. You know, we had a case that came before several months ago, and, you know, it absolutely broke my heart that we couldn't, we couldn't find a way to allow them to put a trailer on there. And I agree that we do have a broken ordinance, but in my mind, this, this is pretty straightforward. It's right across the street from a large area that's R3, there's trailers on adjacent property. You know, I'm looking at this photograph provided by somebody who's against it, and I see a forty, fifty-year-old trailer park that's in really good shape. You know, there's, looks like you take pride in your property. And so I'm going to vote for it.
Okey-dokey.
We're going to put Rod on the spot.
Well, or not necessarily, we can just call for the motion. Let it go down like that. That's right. I'll let it pass. All right, that'll be fine. Okay. Would someone like to make a motion, either for or against?
I'll make a motion for passing this. Do I need to read the consistency statement?
Yeah.
It's on the back. It's on the back.
I'll make a motion for this. I find that the requested map amendments would be consistent with the Buncombe County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, as Buncombe County Comprehensive Land Use Plan updated indicated that R3 is suitable for mobile homes. Buncombe County Comprehensive Land Plan Use Plan 7-3, the residential zoning would be reasonable and in the interest of the adjacent neighbors, as the surrounding area includes mobile homes and would bring the existing mobile home park into compliance.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Michelle, seconds. Any further discussion? Okay, now, somebody over there might, you might help me count on this one. I think we need to count on this.
Maybe we should have a show of hands and just...
All right. All in favor of approving the motion to allow the reclassification, rezoning from R2 to R3, please signify by saying aye, and raise your hand, please.
Aye.
We got three ayes. All right, all opposed, signify by raising your hand and saying no.
No.
No. So motion, the motion does not carry, and the application is denied. Now, there's another step to this process, which I suspect you're familiar with, and it'll have to go before the county commissioners anyway. They'll have to ratify what we've done here today, and you'll have your moment with them to appeal this, so I would encourage you to do so.
And Mr. Chairman, just to make sure that we don't get lost in some technicality, if the other side would make a motion that it be denied for the reasons that it's not consistent with the land use plan.
Okay, can I make that motion? Sure. Will I have to read the? Come on.
You don't have to read the whole thing. You just need to hit the highlights.
Okay. Okay, I'll make, I'll make a motion to deny the application for rezoning this property from R2, currently R2 to R3. And I find that it's inconsistent with the zoning maps, and the requested map amendments would not be consistent with the Buncombe County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. As the Buncombe County Comprehensive Land Use Plan update indicated that R3 is suitable for higher-density uses, and the requested zoning would not be reasonable in the interest of the adjacent neighbors, as the property surrounding the subject property is zoned R2. Okay, so we have that motion on the floor. Second? We have a second by Mr. Hughes. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion to deny the request, raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and signify by saying no.
Aye.
Hey, okay, thank you very much. Good luck. Thank you for your time. Appreciate everybody coming out today.
No, he's not adjourned yet.
Thank you. We don't have any public comment.
I don't see Dee Dee.
I don't see Dee Dee.
What's that?
Said we don't see Dee Dee or Maus, so we may not have public comment.
Let them, let them clear the room, and we'll find out here in a second.
I hate that for them.
Okay.
Oh, absolutely. Hey, Andy, nice to meet you. Yes.
How you doing? Good to see you. I'm ordering a beer.
Oh, you put that very well. I happen to agree with everything you said. So, you know, what?
Good to see you. Well, all right. You look great in retirement. Oh, I'm doing fine.
I think, you know, I think, and as I stated, I think that the ordinance is, and I think we've all kind of agree on that, is broken because R3 does open up a lot of different uses. I hope that the commissioners start to look at that.
Excuse me, excuse me, please. Hello?
Conditionally, that would be great to see that, so.
Could I ask everyone to leave? We're not through with our meeting.
That's, you're fine.
Would everyone clear out, please? We've got another item on the agenda we need to handle. I guess that makes any... All right, we'll do it now, and we'll be done. Do it like the House did last night, voted at midnight down in Raleigh or something like that. Okay, the next item on our agenda is public comment. We'll just move forward to that. It appears that we don't have anybody. Patty, would you like to make up? Okay. I see that we'll have none. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, wait, wait a minute.
Oh, Joe, okay.
I've got something to say.
All right.
If, if, if two folks on this board have their way, I would imagine they would hope today was the last day.
I said that again.
So I wanted to say a moment about Scott and Rod, and they, it's been a pleasure and a joy to work with them. It really is. I think everybody on the board feels that way, and there are others that aren't here that I know would say the same thing. Their expertise has been invaluable. I want to especially recognize Scott because I've, while I haven't been on the board as long as Scott, I sat in on a lot of meetings long before I ever came on the board. And Scott took over as the chair in what I call a new era of the board. And he took the board from a time when, as many of us know, that the public wasn't allowed to speak. It was kind of a closed meeting and, in my opinion, not really representing the public. And he has demonstrated enormous patience and tolerance of diverse opinions and always given everyone a fair chance to speak, and I thank you for that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Well, I tell you, as our current chair, Scott's footsteps have been hard to follow, actually, for the reasons that Joe just mentioned, and I've gotten to know Scott through this process over the last three years, a little over three years that I've been on the board, certainly last year and a half or so as chair. But it's been a pleasure. It's been a pleasure. I've known Rod for, gosh, thirty-five years, probably. So he knows how I feel about him. But again, thanks so much for your service to the county and to the citizens of Buncombe County, and you're going to be missed. And I don't know, this may be premature, Joe.
Yeah, I know.
The decision, the decision process is...
I just wanted to get it in, though.
Well, Debbie, Debbie said it best, like Hotel California, you can check in, but you can't check out.
Can't check out.
That may be the case, but in any event, it is the case, this last meeting. We, I've really enjoyed serving with both you fellows.
We appreciate the opportunity to be here as well, and I think it's important for us to, as we leave, for, you know, to reiterate the fact that Jim Coleman used to say that an ordinance, if it's not constantly moving and growing and accommodating the changes that are here, then it's a dead ordinance. And so I think what we did today, what we saw today, is a perfect example of some evolution that perhaps is long overdue, and I hope that once we're, once we're gone, that that process can take place and that, you know, some new, some new ideas might come to bear on, on that, that affordable housing issue, because it's, it's sad when we have to make decisions like this.
It really needs to be addressed.
It does need to be addressed, but we appreciate all of the patience you've shown with us in, in our service as well, so thank you very much.
Okay.
Did he say patience?
Yes. Yeah, I did.
That's not true. Thank you, Scott.
Okay. Well, we will adjourn, and, oh, next meeting is when? Two weeks from today? Okay. We'll see, see everybody two weeks from today.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
That's the twenty-third, okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.